Deliberate and act on Rattone Main Street Annual Fourth July Parade and Festival Road Closures.
Mayor and Commissioner, we have several summertime activity, Fourth of July-related events listed on the agenda, and Main Street is represented here tonight. If you have any questions, in general, on the next three items on the agenda, we have, staff has performed a review of these events. Police, fire, streets, and myself have reviewed the events to try to have preparation for them, make sure in case of any contingency that we're, we know about that and are prepared. All of the department heads have signed off on all three of those. So, we, in regard to B, C, and D on the agenda, you have our recommendation being the staff for approval of the event and the road closures as well.
Okay.
One question. It says the celebration in Ripley Park is going to be Saturday, but it says July 4th.
Supposed to be Monday.
It's supposed to be Monday, July 4th?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if it was going to be Saturday the 2nd or Monday the 4th, but...
Yeah, I have a couple of errors on the scope of events. Also, just to adjust that the parade I had on there is 12 p.m., that was last year. It is this year, lineup will begin at 11:00 a.m. and the parade will proceed down First at 11:30 a.m. on July the 4th, Monday. And so, we'll proceed north on First Street and end up at the park by noon.
If it's the wishes of the commission, I think you can handle B, C, and D, all in one item.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to take items B, C, and D as one, one item. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I believe everything was in order for all the organizations. And I was glad to see that we were charging something for the fireworks.
I'll move that we accept the item B, July 4th Parade and Festival. Item C, Main Street Fourth Year of Organization of 2016 International Santa Fe Balloon Rally. And item D, Road Closure for VFW Fourth of July Street Dance.
Thank you.
Second and again. I thought we just did that.
No, we move to combine them.
We move that we could combine them. Okay. I have a motion and a second for Rattone Main Street Annual Fourth of July Parade, for the road closures, and for Rattone Main Street Fourth Year of Organization of the 2016 International Santa Fe Balloon Rally. It's for putting up signs and directing traffic, as I remember. And for the road closures of the VFW Fourth of July Street Dance. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Deliberate and act on professional service contract with Alpha Design for Schuler Theater Digital Upgrade Project. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, as way of an update on the project, we have had some meetings on, intended to proceed with design of the project and request bids from vendors for the equipment and the installation of the equipment. And, of course, Schuler Restoration is key to, to that design, and so we have partnered with them as far as performing that. And the, the project is going to have to be reviewed by the State Historic Preservation Office. And in addition, there are probably some additional professional services as far as electrical engineering or electrical improvements. And so, I did request from Dave Little at Alpha Design a proposal to help us coordinate that, to help us get this in front of the ship, or put a bid together. And you have that proposal there in front of you. And I was looking for the amount. It's estimated that design fees would be around $10,000. So, I, Billy Donati is here tonight representing the Schuler Restoration Board. I did ask Schuler Restoration Board to consider sharing in that cost with City of Rattone through some of the trust monies that they have received for improvements to the Schuler. And we're just worried that we would exceed the $100,000 grant. And so, when we've talked to the vendors and got more information from them, I think we're kind of bumping that total. And so, I've made that request to Schuler. And I don't know, Mr. Donati, if you could maybe give us a little input on, on that board, their feeling on that or the overall project.
City Commissioner, Mayor Commission, Schuler Restoration Commission says, yes, let's go for it. It's an important project. And although nobody wants to see dipping into the funds, but I think this is a good investment. And it's, it's not, the scope of the project is such that it, it covers different levels, state, local, and, you know, my technical expertise sometimes is challenged. That's about it. We flip the switch. And so, Dave has the expertise working with the state and different vendors, et cetera. So, yeah, Schuler Restoration, we're, we're in.
We appreciate that. And, of course, we, we want to keep the project in budget, but we want a, a good project, a functional project. And up until the time that we gets to get the bids in, we're estimating as to how that's going to wind up. So, right now, we're, we'll probably need all of that $100,000 coming from EDD to accomplish the project.
Okay. So, in addition to Dave's fee, we're going to have the engineer's fee. Am I correct?
I believe that's, the intent is that that's included in the total here. And it is a estimate. I don't know, Mr. Little, if you could clarify that for us.
No, it's including the engineering cost?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
And I think that's relatively minor.
Okay.
As far as being for electrical.
Engineers are not minor.
[laughing]
At least their cost. Thank you. And tell the board thank you for all of us. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Billy.
Mayor, I make a motion then that we approve the professional services contract with Alpha Design for the Schuler Theater Digital Upgrade Project.
Hold on a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the professional services contract with Alf, but Elf, if I'm all right. Alpha Design for the Schuler Theater Digital Upgrade Project. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Deliberate and act on Resolution 2016-30 Matching Fund Commitment for the New Mex, for New Mexico Main Street Public Infrastructure Funding for Great Blocks, Phase One.
Mayor and Commissioner, New Mexico Main Street does have a process going on for funding through their public infrastructure funding program. Applications are due at the end of June. We are working with Rattone Main Street as far as meeting that deadline and getting a, an application in. And what we're, we are requesting from New Mexico Main Street is funding through this program in the amount of $300,000. The match required is 30%. So, that would be $90,000 on our part. And I would recommend to the commission that we commit $90,000 and we meet that match through our gasoline tax as part of the overall South First Street project. I think we have a very good shot at getting funded. We have final plans ready to go to construction in hand. And this will not build the entire project that has been designed up. I think the designers estimated that at about a million dollars, but we would be close to $400,000. We, we could do a substantial amount of work on the project. And I know that Main Street, Rattone Main Street, is actively working on finding additional funding for the project. So, I think that they'll have some success doing that. So, my recommendation to you is that we commit to the match and we commit gasoline tax. Now, later in the program, we have a report on our street improvement program. And what will tell you is that, winding up the fiscal year, we would estimate that we have about $275,000 in that fund 217, the gas tax. We would estimate next year, I believe, about $145,000 in receipts in the next fiscal year. So, we're committing eight to nine months worth, worth of gas tax to this project.
Is this all a street project? I didn't think it was.
It, Mayor and Commissioner, the, the design involves some street work, but we have been working on the street.
Yeah.
In First Street. So, the, the initial phases of that were street repaving. There still is some street work to be done. There's some curb and gutter work to be done. We had placed a water line in Cook Avenue last year, but we did not get that resurfaced. So, resurfacing Cook Avenue would be a recommendation that we bring to the commission and would try to incorporate in the project. Drainage improvements would be a part of the project. So, now where you see the old storm drain inlets, and you'll recall, last year, we did a project where we replaced old storm drain inlets with new storm drain inlets. We would do something similar on this project. Of course, there's quite a bit of sidewalk involved in the project and streetscaping involved in the project.
How about the Rio Grande intersection there with First Street?
That would be a, a part of the project. Yeah, I think we would try to incorporate that with, with this project.
Yeah, I was just making sure, qualified gasoline tax.
Well, let's, let's, let me find the requirement for gasoline tax. Give me a second here. Somewhere in the stack. So, the gasoline tax reads this way. It is for construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, or other improvement or maintenance of public roads, streets, alleys, or bridges, including right-of-way and materials acquisition. That is the statutory requirement on gasoline tax.
So, they consider sidewalks part of the street?
Well, Mayor, I would say that's, I would. I mean, typically, that's, you know, part of a roadway, especially an urban street project, would include all of those elements. But it really is the decision of the commission at, at this point. My recommendation is, yes, it is part of the, part of the street, part of a street project. It is eligible, but it really is the decision of the commission in, in deciding to go there with the gasoline tax.
That's fine. You know, to me, it would be part of it too, but I'm not in Santa Fe, so.
That's, and that's the definition of it, so.
It sounds pretty explicit to me of what we could use.
I'll make a motion to approve matching funds commitment for the New Mexico Main Street Public Infrastructure Funding for the Great Blocks Grand Phase One.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2016-30 Matching Funds Commitment for New Mexico Main Street Public Infrastructure Funding for Great Blocks, Phase One. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Discussion of Dangerous Building Report, 421 and 421 and a half North Fourth Street and 828 North Third Street.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for seeing me this evening. I'd like to do, I promised you a short presentation. Thank you. Touch on a couple issues with the fire department and conclude with some dilapidated buildings. Those two addresses you did just mention, originally, we were going to make some requests on those, but we're going to postpone that till the next commission meeting. And as we go through, you'll see why. Start off, currently, in the city, we have a burn ban, restricting what type of barbecues you can use, what type of bonfires and stuff like that. We followed suit with the county when they initiated their burn ban. Since then, we have been blessed and have had quite a bit of rain. Everything is looking beautiful and green out there. So, we would like to suspend that burn ban. We do reserve the right to bring it back up if things should dry up and get windy. But at least for now, let's let the folks have their barbecues and do their things. We do still have burn ordinances, and of course, we will continue to enforce those.
Okay.
Okay. Fireworks. I had a number of calls regarding fireworks. Yes, of course, the city will be doing a firework display July 4th, approximately 9 o'clock. The fire department will go around, do their annual collections on the first, second, and third. Far as sales, this is public, or sales to the public. It can be done any time that they want, but the trick is, they can only be lit between June 20th and July 6th, and between the hours of 9:00 and 10:00. So, if they purchase them now out of state or wherever, they can't light them until the 20th. What's prohibited is going to be just about anything that shoots off in the air, aerials, rockets, Roman candles, et cetera. If they purchase it in town, it should be legal because we will be going through and inspecting the stands prior to that. Okay? Onto our main subject, dilapidated structures. I'm sure you've noticed there's a few buildings in town that are past their prime.
[laughing]
We have isolated 10 of them here. And real quickly, the procedure to get them demo, demolished, is, first of all, we have to identify them. Not too difficult. We'll go to, we'll find them. We'll go knock on the door. Most of these nobodies at the house. They're abandoned. Then we'll have to go, we'll take some photos to record it. Then we have to go to the county courthouse, get the backgrounds, get the tax records, the legals, try and track down who the owner is. Once we do that, we'll send a registered letter. Hopefully, it'll get to the owner. Most of the times, it doesn't. It just gets sent, returned, unable to find. If we do contact them, we will tell them the situation, and hopefully, they will work with us to get it cleaned up. If we do not contact them, the next step is, we'll go and get a title search on the property. That will tell us who's been on the records and who has had interest in the property. Once the title search is done, then we'll come to you and get approval to go ahead and start the demolition process. Demolition process will inquire, have your approval. We'll get an asbestos inspection and removal if it's there. And then finally, demolition. Once demolition is done, we will lean the property, add up all of our expenses, and then petition the courts to have it turned over to the city for us to do either dispose of it for sale, trying to recamp our expenses, make a park, another fire station, whatever we feel we need to. Okay? So, I have, with the help of the city manager, we have narrowed it down to 10. This is by no means all of them in the city, but these are 10 that we've been focusing on here. This first one was a victim of a fire in November of 2015. Top photo shows you the place right after the fire. We were able to contact these folks, and they are, are in the process and just about done removing and cleaning this place up. We're probably going to let the, re-contact them, tell them they're close, but they need to finish up the job. This one here, 436 North Fifth Street. This is a house that has been abandoned. Someone has just recently moved into it. If you can see up front, looks like they're putting in some fencing and stuff. The grass and everything has been cut down, cleaned up a little bit. They are making an effort on this one also. So, we are probably going to work with them and push it further down on our to-be-considered list. This one here, also a victim of fire September of 2014. It sat for over two years, nobody going in or doing anything with it, till we started taking actions on it. And now, the house then quit claimed over to someone else, who about two, three weeks ago came to the fire station, saying that they want to demolish it themselves, and they are going to reclaim the property. They are working with the city to get a roll-off, and they are probably going to go ahead and knock this down, so that way, we don't have to. We're continuing to work with them on that. This one, 515 Nevada. Top picture is how it was about a year ago. Actually, that shows July of 2015, maybe about a year ago. We were about to come to you folks to try and get approval to knock this place down. Bears have been living inside of it. It's been coming a death trap. We had letters from the police department, from fish and game, of course, the fire department, everyone in favor. The last step was to get the title search. Through the title search, we were able to get ahold of different bank, one over in Trinidad, who referred us to the actual property owner who lives in Arizona. Getting ahold of them, they came out, they cut the grass, they knocked it down. They didn't really clean it up quite as much as we wanted to, but they did do a good job. We're going to contact them and see if we can persuade them to do a little bit more work on the property. This next one, 412 Grant Avenue. It's been vacant for quite a while. The owner lives over in Trinidad, but she has not been accepting our letters. The house itself, with a little love, could be saved. But the way it's going, it's eyesore to the entire neighborhood. Unless something's done by the owners, the city is going to eventually have to step in and do something with it. It's not our worst-case scenario, but it is on our list of the top 421 North Fourth Street. Hard to tell, but this is actually two houses. It's owned by a deceased person. We are unable to locate any errors or anything like that. It has been left abandoned for a number of years. As you can see, the trees are overgrown. Fortunately, I guess that's a blessing because it does hide the house. It's hard to tell, but all the windows are broke out, doors are kicked in. You can tell transits have been in and out. All unusual types of events have been going on inside. This is very high on our list to be demolished. We've also received a number of complaints on this house. 516 South Second. This house was originally brought to us as a complaint as far as planning and zoning. They were starting to rebuild it, and there's questions about setbacks and things like that. We made contact with them. As you can see, they are slowly refurbishing the house. It's starting to look a lot better. There are still some issues about permits, building and zoning permits. But as far as the condition of the house, it's probably time to push this one off of the demolish list, make room for something else. This one, 828 North Third. This was high on our list. It had a fire, as you can tell, December of 2013. It sat untouched since then, up until about a month ago. The owner of the property made contact with us, told us that they were going to quit claim it to another party. We got ahold of that other party, who said that he was going to quit claim it to the neighbor. A week later, the neighbor, they changed their mind, and now it's going to a relative in the family. Now, the bottom picture was taken just this morning. You can see they're starting to clean it up. The person has made arrangements with the city. They're going to continue to clean it up and knock it down. So, that's one that I think we can take off of our list, but we'll keep an eye on it to make sure that they do follow through with it. Okay, this last one, 537 North Fourth Street. It also had a fire January of 2012. It's been left vacant like that since then, hasn't been touched. It's pretty high on our list. We've received a number of complaints on it. And if nothing is done with that, eventually, yes, we are going to need to demolish that. Okay? So, those are 10. I've got, talked with the city manager Barry a number of times over these. And we did have, whoops, I'm sorry, there's one more. This is over on Price Street. There's a number of mobile homes, mostly single-wide, that are in very bad shape. As you can see from the top picture, this one doesn't even have exterior walls. Made contact with the owner, and slowly, they are knocking, tearing them apart and knocking them out, down, and removing them. On the bottom, you can see the bottom frame is still there. I went by there this morning, and that is even gone. Additionally, he is working on two others. He has four or five others that he's going to need to work on. It's an expense for him. He, he has limited funds, but he is working on them. Okay? So, what our recommendation is, the next city commission meeting on June 28th, we will be coming to you with a request to start the demolition process, which is getting the asbestos testing. If there is asbestos, have it removed, and then go ahead and get our crews in there and knock this down and get it hauled away. This is the location on North Fourth, the two houses that have been left abandoned for a number of years. And I think it would really benefit the, the city. And plus, it would be a start. What's, what we really need is a start. We're estimating, probably by the time we're all said and done, about another $10,000 to $12,000 to have this over and done. Okay?
To demo, to demo it, it'd be around 12 to...
That's what we're guessing. We're thinking using our city crews to do it and our equipment.
That's good. The one in Albuquerque last night was $85,000 to demo it.
Holy cow, wow.
In one house.
Right. And this is our first one the city's done in a number of years. So, it's kind of our trial to give us an idea of how much this is all going to cost and everything total.
One other quick question.
Sure.
Mr. Campbell could jump in on this one too, probably. The, are most of these houses, were they on the arrears list for both water and, and electric?
I know they don't have any hooked up.
They don't?
We have to check them. I mean, you know, there's, every six weeks, there's a charge off list of what's uncollected. That, that sits on there to where somebody comes back and tries to connect it. It's on there. We can run those. But once it's gone to charge off, if the property's leveled, it's already been, you know, charged off. But we continue to monitor on any of these where they are cleaning up. The other ones, we'll watch closely. If they turn utilities back on, they will be, have to pay the pass due amount.
Okay. Can the pass due amount be added, any lanes the city might put against the property? Very good. So, that's our plan. Hope to come to you at the next meeting, get approval to start demolition process. And if there's any more questions, I'd be happy to address them.
I want you to go ahead and do this. I want to know if we've budgeted any money to do it.
Mayor and Commissioner, you know, that's, that's one of the issues. And we get that question a lot. It's, why didn't the city just go on their, on this property on Monday and knock this down? And, and there are a number of reasons. Two primary reasons is, that is privately-owned property. There is a due process to this. And on the one hand, that property owner has to acknowledge that he has a responsibility to the rest of our citizens, and those properties are affecting the town in an adverse way. And so, we remind them that they do have a responsibility. On the other hand, that is privately-owned property, and there is due process. And there's a, the process is spelled out in the ordinance, which we will follow to the letter in bringing this to the commission. And because there is due process, there is a timeframe associated with that too. Now, yes... Now, yes, we're gonna be very challenged to spend that kind of money on structure after structure. And we would really like to work cooperatively with these property owners and get them to meet their responsibility. But at some point, the city is gonna have to bear some expense in getting these cleaned up. Now, I have met extensively with staff, specifically the fire department and the police department, and, you know, they do have full-time jobs doing emergency services, but we all are working together to try to bring these important improvements to Raton. And so I appreciate all the men in uniform that would put time into this. And you can tell from Chief's presentation that they, it's important to these departments to, with public works, utilities, we're all working as a team to try to get this cleanup going. And it is a momentum thing. I think once we get the momentum going, that we get some properties cleaned up, we'll see better results as we go along. The cost is a good question, Mayor, and we'll have to talk about that as we get closer, how we're paying for this. That's an excellent question.
My understanding, we need to postpone the vote then on item G.
We will need to...
I don't think there was any action for that.
Just discussion.
Just discussion.
Our plan is to bring a resolution to you. We'll do that at the next meeting, but per the ordinance, the first step is to bring a report to the commission.
It's a process. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mayor, we did have, you know, action on that. I probably jumped the gun and bring that up, but you do have the Chief's recommendation.
Right. Deliverate an act on recommendation to rescind fire restrictions in and around the city of Raton.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. With a motion and a second, to rescind the fire restrictions in and around the city of Raton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Deliverate an act on appointment to the lodgers tax board. We have one applicant, it's Maurice Lemos, and I think you all have a copy of his application. I couldn't read it.
I'll make a motion to approve Jose Mauricio Lemos to the lodgers tax board.
Second.
With a motion and a second, to appoint Maurice Lemos to the lodgers tax board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Maurice is appointed. Deliverate an act on resolution 2016-31, budget adjustment number 13, fiscal year 16. And Michael Ann is not here.
Yes, Mayor and Commission, our treasurer did have a family emergency. We didn't really get a chance to talk about this very much. I'm seeing the same information that you are, and we could do whatever you want to do on this. If it's fairly self-explanatory, we could proceed with the action, or we could talk about it at the next meeting.
I don't have any problem approving it. It's just line item adjustments.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 20-16, or 2016-31 budget adjustment 13 FY16.
I'll second.
With a motion and a second, to approve resolution 2016-31, budget adjustment number 13, fiscal year 16. And I wanted to go ahead and approve this because I'm sure it has to be downstate before the end of the fiscal year, which is the end of June. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Deliverate an act on agreement between the city of Raton and Colfax County Vector Control Service Agreement.
Mayor and Commission, what vector control means is spraying for mosquitoes. And so, as per last year, Colfax County had hired a contractor that traveled countywide to spray, and it asked municipalities to help them offset the cost in their municipality. And this is the same agreement that we executed last year. The cost is $3,000 and their contractor will spray around Raton. And last year, we had a lot of contact with the contractor. We asked him to spray in certain areas or prior to certain events, and it worked pretty well with one exception. I think the balloon rally, and I went out with the contractor and he sprayed the old La Mesa Airport intensively, but then it rained and there were a lot of mosquitoes there. So I think it was because of the rain that it just didn't work. But outside of that, this worked very well for us, and I would certainly recommend that we approve the agreement again this year.
Yeah, I wanted to know the price and you addressed that, so thank you. And there was some problems at the soccer field on the Friday nights.
We will look on that location as well. I know that's a tough location.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the city of Raton and Colfax County Vector Control Services Agreement.
Second. With a motion and a second, to approve the agreement between the city of Raton and the Colfax County Vector Control Service Services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Deliverate an act on recommendation of street improvements, 2016, 2017. Mr. Barry?
Mayor and Commission, primarily how we fund street improvements in the municipality is through the gas tax. And in New Mexico, there's a 17 cent tax on fuel. Two cents of that comes to the municipality. That generates, as you see here, between $125,000 and $140,000 annually. So when we look at the work that we need to do on our streets, that's not very much money. We also try to use that money to leverage additional funds. We've had good success through the DOT's Local Government Road Fund Program. And there are two grants basically that we apply for annually, the Municipal Artorial Program and the Co-op Agreement. We've had good luck with the Municipal Artorial Program, but last year, we were not funded. We were funded for a Co-op Agreement. Both of those programs work this way. If you're approved, DOT will pay 75% of the grant amount. The city will commit to 25% of the grant amount. So on the second page, you see that we have a grant in hand for $64,624, and you see some recommendations on where we would like to make those improvements. We were not successful on a Municipal Artorial Program for this year, so you do not see that. And that's generally higher dollars than the Co-op. We do have application in currently for Municipal Artorial Program and for a Co-op. It's usually after this June DOT meeting that we're notified whether we're successful or not in our application. So it would be a couple of weeks until we know how that's gonna go. But on these current applications, by the time they notify us that we will be funded and then we receive a grant agreement, it's usually too late in the year to do the work, so it probably goes to 2017. So we haven't planned on that during the current construction program. But as far as other funds that we have, we do have a capital outlay from the 2015 New Mexico Legislature, an amount of $150,000. We've talked about this several times previously, and the commission had voted to put that fund towards the final phase of Tiger Drive project. And that's from the railroad tracks to South Second Street, rehabilitating that piece. We actually estimate that that could cost about $200,000. So we would recommend to the commission that we take $50,000 out of our gas tax fund 217 to put towards the project and combine that with the 150. The other option there would be to try to move the Co-op to Tiger Drive, but you have my recommendations there, which I would like to see those Co-op funds go towards repaving of three blocks of downtown avenues. And those are blocks between First Street and Second Street. For some reason, those avenues have really been ignored over the years or in bad shape. So I think my priorities are Savage Avenue, that's right by the park down here. That road is, really needs attention. Cook Avenue. Cook Avenue is in there because we did install a water line last year and we patched that, but we would try to overlay that block following that project. And then Apache Avenue would be another block that really needs some attention. And then lastly, we did receive a $150,000 capital outlay out of the 2016 legislature. We asked to be included in the earliest bond sale to make those funds available, and we are hopeful that the funds would be available this summer. And if they are, my recommendation to you is that we put those into a chip seal project and it would be a continuation of what we started last year, where we did avenues in the Maxwell South Edition. We would keep moving north on those avenues. And the ones I would like to do this year are Moore Avenue, Pecos Avenue. Dwyer is a street that is really in severe distress. We've spent a lot of time patching that and it really needs resurfacing. Buena Vista, I think, is a block that we have proposed, and then a couple of blocks of South Fourth Street. So that's basically my recommendations to you on street construction for the summer. It would depend on that grant agreement for the capital outlay showing up, which it has not yet. And then there's a couple of hoops to jump through, but that's what we would like to work on. It's a little lower than the work we did last year, but last year, we had two MAP grants in hand, and we don't have one this year. So that's primarily the reason for that. Now, in regard to the Fund 217, our recommendation to you, as we earlier reported, we would estimate that we would wind up with a balance of about 275 at the end of the year. Revenues of around 140 annually. And in my recommendation to you, that includes expenditures a little under $60,000 out of there. I would like to see us maintain a balance of about a quarter million in that so that we use that for leveraging. Occasionally, we get a property owner that will ask us if we'll share in the cost of replacing curb and gutter, doing improvements there. But there are various reasons why we need those funds on hand. And so we would like to maintain, you know, a minimum of $200,000, but we still have probably some funds to work with there. On the other hand, these streets need attention, obviously. And we wanna do the highest priority. We wanna do, you know, as much work as we reasonably can. And that's where we just have to prioritize the work that we're doing. So in my recommendations for the downtown avenues and the chip seal streets, I see streets that are really distressed. They need attention immediately, but they're, I think, a pretty high priority as far as traffic volume, the number of residents or the number of cars that use those daily. They're in areas of town that I think we support the property values in those areas and they serve a variety of functions. So that's my recommendations, and I bring those to you, and I'll certainly stand for your input.
We've talked a number of times about number three, at least Savage Avenue. And do you think we can do all three blocks for $64,000?
I do, Mayor. Savage Avenue requires about 200 foot of curb and gutter, and that's really the expensive item. The other blocks require a little bit, but not much concrete work. That's where it really gets expensive. So our plan would be just to mill and overlay those blocks. And I applied prices from last year's project when we worked on Pecos and Galisteo, and yeah, it comes up to the approximate amount of the Co-op grant.
I'll move to accept the proposed street improvement project of 2016, 17.
Okay.
Second.
With a motion and a second, to approve the recommendation of street improvements for 2016, 2017. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recommendation passes.
I'd like to ask Mr. Barry one question. We will get real aggressive this year going after the legislative funds, because you remember last year, they shut us down because of the low gas, the low gas price. Well, it's been up for the past six months. I think that we really pressed them hard this year.
Mayor and Commission, you know, I did ask to be on the agenda of the State Highway Commission, which is meeting in Raton, and we'll talk about that a little bit. And I did ask to be included on the agenda. We're gonna talk about local transportation, the status of that, and the importance of that to our economic development. But I would tell the commission, one additional thing that I think we'd like to bring up is, at 17 cents, the state of New Mexico is really significantly lower than any state surrounding us as far as gasoline tax. And I know officials in the state have said, we're not for additional taxes. And I really concur with that. I think most of us can agree with that, but gas tax is a road user fee. And it's pretty well engineered that if you buy a tank of gas, you're gonna drive on these roads, you're gonna use them, and a part of your purchase is gonna go to maintaining the roads. The, I think the thing, the trend that we're seeing currently is that's changing a little bit. And I did attend the paving conference and the Secretary of the Washington DOT was present. Now, the state of Washington, and they're a little different situation than New Mexico, but their gas tax is 45 cents a gallon. And they say they're losing ground. And the reason is, number one, the cost of construction has really skyrocketed, has really jumped up. It's much more expensive to build roads than it was 20 years ago, and this gas tax in New Mexico has not changed. And two cents is not a lot for a municipality. But what they're reporting also is, you're seeing more high-mileage vehicles and you're seeing vehicles that don't buy fuel. So if you have an all-electric vehicle, they are using the roads and they're paying nothing. If you have a, if you used to drive a vehicle that got 18 miles a gallon and now you're getting 34 miles a gallon, you're paying a lot less for the use of the road. And meanwhile, fixing that road has got a lot more expensive. So in the future, legislators will wrestle with this gas tax issue, but it's plain to see in New Mexico that it is just inadequate to maintain the infrastructure currently.
I believe there were two bills introduced, two separate bills introduced last year.
Last year.
Either one made up to vote.
Yeah. They killed it in committee, both of them.
So, yes, I think we want to really make that a top priority, fixing our streets. The state is wrestling with the same thing. They are losing ground continuously on highways and bridges and just have inadequate funding. And of course, that's what funds the Local Government Road Fund as well. So we've seen those dollars shrinking over the years, too. So we're in the same boat, really, as the state.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Deliverate an act on MOU between the city of Raton and the Raton Chamber of Commerce.
Mayor and Commission, you have the MOU, which was originally approved by the commission at this time last year. And that memorandum of understanding does specify an amount of lodgers tax that would be paid to the chamber for providing services, which are described in the agreement. And it also allows for renewal of this one-year period for two additional periods. So what I've done is I've included amendment number one to the MOU for your consideration tonight. And under amendment number one, you would renew the MOU for an additional one-year period.
At the very last meeting, I asked for a financial statement, and I got a profit and loss. That's not a financial statement. Financial statements are balance sheet and the P and L. I asked for assets, liabilities, revenues, and... I asked for assets, liabilities, revenues, and expenses. So, you know, I still would like to have that.
Mayor, are you talking about the, for the payroll account?
Yes. You still have a checking account, which is an asset. I don't know if you have anything else in it, and I don't know if you have any payroll liabilities or other things.
Okay. A balance sheet for the end of this fiscal year?
Well, if we don't get it until next month, yes.
Okay.
And the other thing I did notice is, you're paying federal unemployment, FUTA, 501(c) fours, 501(c) anything, you're not required to pay FUTA.
You know that all of those payroll deductions are done through quick books, so I'm not sure what I'd have to do to change that, or what we have to do that will save you.
I have no idea what you'd have to do, but you're not required to pay them. You know, it's not going to save you much, but a penny's a penny. And I am not sure how the figures are generated. I'm trying to think where I wrote that down, but you received $27,500 from the city, and you spent $27,928.54, which is $2,428.54 more than what you brought in. That's why I need your balance sheet, so I know what you carried forward and that sort of thing. Because you didn't make, you made some extra contributions, but they don't add up to that. I thought they added up to like $800. I don't know where I wrote it down. At any rate, and I also took the time to add up all of the gross payroll figures, unless I missed something. Your report says $25,770.74, and when I added that up, it came to $24,912.83. So I don't know what else you're putting in there under wage expense. It's more than just the payroll check.
What we're doing is taking my payroll out of that account, because Quick Books will only, will only let us hook up to one account, and then we're depositing it back in. So the, I think it's $133 is the difference. That's the check that's coming from operating back into the lodger's tax for my payroll.
You made a deposit of $304.22, $80.83, $199.52, and $230.31.
Yes, ma'am. That is the expense of my check that comes out of that account, but then is reimbursed from the operating.
Okay. If I figure correctly, you received $888.75. I don't have a calculator to see, but that might be, might be correct. All right. I misunderstood in the cover letter. I thought you were just taking funds so that you weren't overdrawn. So you're taking your wage out of this account, your wage?
Yes.
And then you're being reimbursed?
Reimbursed.
Okay. Do you know if it's, if it's net or if it's gross? I guess it would be net.
Net. And any tax expenses as well? The accounting expenses also being reimbursed.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
You made a statement that we expended $29,000. Out of the account, we show 27,954.
If I said 29, it was, it's 27,928.54.
Which is less than $200 more than we received.
Let me see what I did here. Yes, it's $428.54.
I understand correctly.
It would.
Yeah. I'm trying to think.
It looks to me that they expended $428.54 more than they received.
Correct. Okay, when you bring the money back over, do you credit the wage expense?
Yes.
Okay. I'm really off, because I believe Vivian made gross $24,024.8.
This report is only for 11 months, not 12.
I know. I went through the different checks that were issued.
So, I'm sorry, what was the question again?
Your report says $25,270.78. And if you're crediting yours, I have her making 24, 2408. So there's something else in there. I don't know what.
So is this all that, is this all that we need, or we need the full financials?
I don't think that we can require the full financials, because in our budget, we're talking about $30,000. And this is the account that has to be in a separate account.
I think you want a balance sheet right on the payroll.
Yes, I do.
Madam Mayor, since the city manager added a denim one, the MOU shall be renewed for a one-year period commencing July 1st. He recommended that we approve that. I say we make a motion to approve it for that one-year term, with the stipulation that you'll continue to give us the proper financial statements and things that are being required.
Okay. And for clarification, you want to, you don't want an income, you just want a balance sheet?
No, I want a balance sheet and an income and a P and L, because I need to tie together. If you don't have both of them, you have no idea.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was the motion, Ron? Would you repeat?
That we accept the MOU for the one-year period beginning July 1st, with the stipulations that they will provide us with the proper financial.
Okay.
May I have a second on that, Madam Mayor?
Yes. We have a motion and a second to approve the Amendment Number One to the memorandum of understanding between the City of Raton and Raton Chamber of, Chamber of, Chamber and Economic Development Council, Inc., doing business as the Raton Chamber. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion passes. City managers report.
Mayor, I would report that we had some meetings recently. On June 1st, I attended a meeting with the New Mexico Environment Department, Surface Water Quality Bureau. The Army Corps of Engineers was scheduled to attend, and they did not, did not make it, but we did meet with Surface Water Quality Bureau. We met with our engineer for the Seagerstrom Creek Restoration Project, myself and Dan Campbell, and the purpose was to inspect the Seagerstrom Creek Restoration Project and provide the ED with that, with progress on that, because the grants that's funding that does go through the Surface Water Quality Bureau. And they did comment that the work, the work looked very good to them. The project is about 75% complete. Our engineer did provide a report to ED on the schedule and scope of work of the remaining 25%. So Dan and Chris Phillips have been working on that with ED, but the project is looking I did attend a Neighborhood Watch meeting on June 9th. Battalion Chief Burke and Chief Matthews were present to talk to the Neighborhood Watch about code compliance issues, their process, what's going on there. They presented interesting information that I think was very useful to the residents about what their process is, how much effort and time they put into it. And they showed some of the before and after pictures of compliance issues that they've undertaken, and there's a lot of work, and I want to really give my thanks to Chief Burke and Chief Matthews for the work that they do in that. I would add right there that we are in a season where vegetation is really growing, and we've got a little bit of rain, and we've seen some of these weeds and brass and just really jump up. I've seen a lot of people mowing in various places around town, but we have some places that really need some attention. So we would hope that residents will take that responsibility, make the town look good. But if not, our code guys will probably be reaching out to those people. And of course, that's very time-consuming, so we would just hope that that gets done without that occurring. In addition, on June 8th, I did attend a regional groundwater planning group meeting that was held in Maxwell, and there was a presentation by a group from New Mexico Tech. And I think the conclusion of that is, they need quite a bit of money to really complete this groundwater planning effort. And they did ask for some money through the legislature last year, did not receive any, and I think that's going to be the goal, is to continue to ask the legislature to fund that project. I would remind the commission and the public that we will have Randy Van Vleck here from the New Mexico Municipal League on, well, that's tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
The 15th, at 1:30 PM in the chambers here. I would really hope that all or most of the commission is able to attend that, that the lodger's tax board is able to attend that, and that any group that utilizes lodger's tax would be able to attend. Randy will train, give us training on what the statute says as far as use of lodger's tax. It's been quite a few years since we've done that training, and I think it's pretty valuable. The Policy Committee of New Mexico Municipal League meets in Albuquerque on June 25th. I am a member of the Public Infrastructure and Communications Committee, so I did plan on attending that meeting. That is on a Saturday. Some of you may have committee assignments there as well. And then I know there's another round of those meetings in July, and I'll report to you on that. We have some bids coming up. We are opening bids on Thursday, May 16th, at 1:30 PM. That's for the landfill final cover construction. Now, in regard to that project, we would, we would like to proceed, I have May written down, did I say May?
You did say May.
June.
June.
June 16th, Thursday, 1:30 PM. Apologize. Because we're pretty far into June, and that involves constructing the final cover and hopefully getting vegetation down, I would ask the commission if you would consider having a special meeting to award that project. And so I would look at next Tuesday, just to award that one. It could be the evening, 6 o'clock, or we could do it during the day, but I want to get your input on scheduling a special. That would save a week as far as doing that project.
Right. What day would that be?
June 21st.
21st. Would be the 21st.
It'd have to be evening for me, I have a board meeting, and we have, well, we have water board meeting that evening as well.
Yeah. And I don't know if you want to go at 5:30, and we have one, we would have one item coming.
That'd be fine.
It would get that project going a little quicker, you know, some of the months are pretty valuable to us. So we will schedule a special meeting, 21st, 5:30 PM. Northeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization, NRTPO, they will meet June 29th. That will be in Angel Fire. I have a plan on attending that meeting. I can tell the commission that RPS has completed removal of the Wortsilla unit. The contractor there is RTS Shearing. They have completed the work. The Wortsilla unit is gone, and we're ready to start to work on installing the GE Genbacher unit. That will take place in the fall. RPS did conduct a pre-bid conference for the construction phase of the Genbacher unit, and bids will open on June 17th at 3:30 PM. Raton Water Works is currently asking for bids on the Lake Dorothy spillway rehabilitation project. There's some dilapidated concrete there, and the Colorado dam engineer people have asked that we overlay that and replace some of that concrete. So bids are due on Thursday, June 16th, at 2:00 PM. So Thursday will be a busy day for bidding. Raton Water Works is also bidding their pre-sedimentation basin repairs. That's the basin at the Cimarron River, west of Cimarron. Bids are due on July 13th on that project. I did want to tell the commission that there was a flag retirement ceremony taking place that unfortunately was at the same time as the city commission meeting, 6 o'clock, and that ceremony was being conducted by the Raton Red Hatters, the Tierra del Asetas chapter of NSDar, and Dennis and Sue Dowling. So that ceremony is going on as we, as we are talking. And then lastly, Mayor, I would just let the commission know that on June 12th, 2011, five years ago on Sunday was the occurrence of the track fire, which also started on a Sunday. So at this time, five years ago, the fire was burning. Chief, I don't know if you have some of the photos there. But it seems, it's just a few of the pictures that we had from that time, and if you could scroll through those for me, Chief, I would tell you that we don't want to go back there again. Just in talking to Dan Campbell before the meeting, we would estimate that the cost of not fighting the fire, but watershed restoration has been over $2 million. We have completed most of that work. The only work that's left is the Seagerstrom Creek Restoration Project, and as we stated, that's about 75% complete. We would think that that will be complete by the end of summer or fall of this year. So five years of really hard work on the part of a lot of city personnel to work in the watershed, and at this point, you know, it's done. Not something that we would want to do again. I would also kind of remind the commission that because of that watershed work, Raton did receive the Governor's Environmental Excellence Award in 2015, so we're very proud of that. And I would say that we have had a lot of success with the watershed restoration. Again, not something we would want to do again. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Is there anything else to come with this body?
I did, I did miss one item that I had here. I did give you an agenda for the State Transportation Commission. They are meeting in Raton, June 16th, 8:30 AM, at the Best Western Raton Hotel. So they will conduct their meeting. They travel around the state generally, different locations. I think they met in Las Cruces at their last meeting. People will come from a great distance to attend this in Raton. So we want to say thanks to the commission for coming, thanks to the chairman, Ron Smits, for bringing the commission to Raton, and the public is invited, and certainly the commission is invited to that meeting. And that's all. invited to that meeting, and that's all.
Any other business to come before this body? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.